Graduation?
No.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, your first cover, you need the public area to come in your question. I'm just standing.
Hi, I feel like I was just here. Hi. Okay. Okay, so we'll wait for Donna to get the PowerPoint up and then we'll get started. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Well, we're going to be talking about the preliminary FY '26 budget plan. One of the main components of the budget is the Student Opportunity Act. '26 is going to be the fifth year of the implementation of this act. And really, what this act was meant to do is that it was increasing foundation and foundation budget rates in different categories to try to keep up with inflation and actual spending by districts. So some categories in the budget are getting, it gets additional rates factor to it. So just some highlights of the FY '26 budget. Chapter 70 in the governor's number is approximately $7.3 billion or a $420 million increase over FY '25. Again, there's still new rates. These are the same five categories that they keep increasing rates on: benefits, guidance and psychological services, special ed, out-of-district, ELs, and low income. And it also includes some additional funding into the benefits category. So the next slide, as I talked about, the foundation budget rates, which are going to be on the next slide, every year, the rates get increased by the inflationary rate that's at the state. So this year, it's 1.93%. It's different every year, goes up some years, in bad years, it's actually gone down, but mostly the inflation rate goes up, as we all know. There's also a special rate that gets applied to the benefits category because that's the one that's the most not keeping up or that's exceeding inflationary rates. So what the state does is they use the three-year premium average increase for the GIC plans. The GIC plans are the state governed health plans, so they use those as their guide. And so for FY '26, the increase to those rates is 6.13%. And this next slide kind of show you numerically what I'm talking about. So the state assigns rates to 11 categories: administration, instructional, leadership, classroom teachers, you can read those across. And then down the call, down the rows, it breaks it out by grade levels. As the kids get older, the education gets more expensive. Vocational education is the most expensive model next to special ed. Special ed is a category of its own, but vocational, for the regular ed categories, gets the highest attributed to it. And you can see in some instances where those higher rates are is in classroom teachers. For safety reasons, we have, you know, more teachers to less students, et cetera. So that's why we have higher rates there. Also, in equipment and materials, because vocational equipment is more expensive, you're purchasing one piece of equipment at $100,000 or better, or even your supplies for construction, supplies, et cetera, are more. So that's another big difference, as well as in the operations maintenance, we function as our own city. So we don't use, we don't have plows, you know, people, the town plowing for us, we do our own. We also have to maintain equipment, which can be more expensive, so there's higher there in employee fixed benefits. The next couple of sections are special education, in district and out. So you get the, the students below this vocational level are all duplicative counts of the students up above. And I'm sorry for those that were at the budget workshop, this is repetitive, but they're duplicative counts of the pupils above. You just get what's an increment above that because the education model for those students is more expensive. So you have your special ed in district, so you can see it's $32,0114. You get additional per each of those students. Special ed out of tuition doubt, you can see that's $40,989. As I told you in last meeting, we don't have out-of-district placements. We might have short-term placements for students, but to come to Monty Tech, you have to be able to be at Monty Tech, so we don't have those permanent residential placements, so we don't have those students. The next section is your English learners, so we fall under the high school level. So again, that's $35,75 per actual. And then low-income groups. So Monty Tech falls into low-income group six, which is 30 to 35.99% free and reduced lunch. So what the state does is we upload all our students through a database to them, they match the names of the students to what they have, EBT, SNAP programs, Mass Health, Medicaid, they match up. And if they have a match, those students get counted on our free and reduced counts. And then we get the additional 5662 per pupil for those counts. So on the next slide, you can see how it works, and actually from Monty Tech. So column seven, all of our students are vocational students. Now, this is foundation enrollment. So you see that we have 1,488 students. Vocational enrollment, or foundation enrollment, excuse me, is the students that live in one of our 18 districts and district members that come to Monty Tech, that are actually enrolled here. It also includes the students that reside in our 18 communities that go to another vocational school. So if a Pittsburgh student goes to Leominster CTE, that gets counted in our foundation enrollment. The other component that goes in there is our practical nursing adult program. The students that live in our district towns get added in there because that is a chapter 74 program. So that's what makes up that 1488. Now, we just saw all the rates on the previous slide per category, so it's just literally a multiplication down the column to get those numbers. Then columns eight through 13, as I pointed out, those are all the above base students. So you can see 74 special ed students. Now, if you were at the last workshop, you heard me say, that's an assumed percentage, that's not actuals, we're in the 200s there. It's, it's a three-point, it's an assumed percentage of 3.9% for K-12 non-voc schools and 4.9% for seven percent of vocational schools. So that's all they do, is just take an assumed percentage there. So that's that number. We get the additional $32,000 per student there in the categories, and that's where that column comes in. Bump to our ELs, we have the 14, times that rate, that's that column. Then low income, 484, those are the students that we said matched. Multiply the additional there, that's, that's column 13. So adding all those up, we get to column 14. So we have the same 1,488 pupils with all the calculations done down the side. That gives us a total foundation budget of $30,994,14, synonymous with required net school spending. So this is going to be the base of all our spending. Remember, I told you, net school spending cannot include transportation, meals, capital, debt service, all of those are outside of this requirement. This is purely operating. When you divide that out by the pupils, it comes up to 20,827 per pupil. I used that number a couple times to tell you how things work, so that's where they get it, 20,827. The next line is a breakdown of our chapter 70 state aid summary. So the left-hand side is our current, it starts with our current FY '25, chapter 70. Row two is foundation budget. We just saw on the previous slide how that was calculated, the $30 million. The next row, the required district contribution of $12,227. We're going to talk about that, how that's calculated, but the state does a calculation for every single community in Massachusetts based on property value in the town, income of the residents of the town, and then they multiply that out by a municipal revenue growth factor that the Department of Revenue assigns. It's a different number for every town, and I gave you your individual town or cities informations at your places. So they determine that, we'll see how that comes about. You subtract the $30 million, our foundation budget, from the required district contribution, and you get our, our state aid for FY '26, $18,762,805, or an increase of $290,597. Now, if that number was $0.5, $10, if you calculate it to that, we would get what's in row six, the minimum aid. So the state sets a minimum aid each year. This year, so far, it's $75 per pupil. So that would be your minimum increase. So ours would be $111,600, but we are calculating to get more. Now, if you hear the term "hold harmless" at any of your towns or for whatever reason, the districts who are only getting the minimum of $75 per pupil increase are in what's called "hold harmless." That means they didn't have enough of a foundation budget increase, less what their communities have to pay them to warrant getting any additional chapter 70 this year. In actuality, the state might look at it and say, we could actually cut your chapter 70. You don't, you didn't get it, you know, earn enough, but we're not going to cut you, we're only going to give you the minimum. That's called being in "hold harmless." And there's like 221 state districts in the state that are "hold harmless," and it's not good because you can see how small that increase is. Even our increase is small. That's very small. So then we're going to shoot over to the right-hand column, which shows our '26 stuff. So you can see our foundation budget, we talked about that, we go up by 12 students in the foundation enrollment. Foundation budget, we saw how that was calculated. We're going to talk about the required district contribution in a further slide. I just showed you how our chapter 70 slide is calculated and our net school spending. So our net school spending is the same number, as you'll see, as our foundation budget. If you look at FY '25, you'll see our required net school spending was $30,118,457, and our foundation budget was less, it was $29,905,697. Last year, we were a "hold harmless" district. So they said, well, if we're going to give you more chapter 70, you're going to spend it all. So that's why normally foundation budget and required net school spending are the same number, unless you are in that "hold harmless" situation. Another thing that I want you to kind of garner from this slide is that our required net school spending goes up $872,000, but our chapter 70 only increases by $290,000. So that tells you right away, a lot of the burden of the increase, $581,000, is already coming from the districts in the form of your required minimum contribution. So that's quite substantial. The next slide is kind of a breakdown of the budget summary, a kind of, you know, this is what's happening with our expenditures. So I break it out to start with our comparison of '25, '26, but you can see net school spending, $30,994,14, but foundation budget, required net school spending, same thing. Transportation, $25,445,20, that's our contracted 30 buses that pick up the kids and bring them home every day. That's that number. Above net school spending, $606,410. We are only one, this budget is only 1.96% above our required net school spending. It's very tight, it's very close. We were just under a percentage, just out of percentage last year, slightly above. So again, we are very, we keep it very close, and it's, I will admit, it's getting tougher and tougher each year to keep that close with contractual increases, et cetera, but you'll see that. And then we have our capital budget of $450,000, and vehicles of $50,000, which is a $10,000 decrease from last year in that regard. So that gives us our proposed FY '26 budget, $34,641,344. That's a $1.1 million budget increase or 3.51%, which you can see largely driven by our net school spending requirement, which went up 2.9%. The next row talks about our estimated chapter 70 funds, while I showed you how that was calculated. So that's the $18,782,805. The first red number, required minimum contribution, that's the 12, that's $12,227,609. That's all 18 communities combined, the minimum required that the state sets, that's that first section. The next section is the transportation and other operating from above. So what we do is we take our transportation, the $2.5 million, the 30 school buses, in our above net school spending number of 606, we add, we add that there. From that, we subtract out what we anticipate receiving for revenues. So we, we're estimating $2 million in transportation. It's approximately 78%. See how that shakes out as the budget process goes through the legislature. Regional transportation fund. So this is a fund this committee voted to establish, and what happens is each year, at the end of the year, actually, I normally ask you in like July or August, because that's when I have the numbers, I ask you to vote a number that we received for our transportation aid that was above what we estimated here in this budget. So in FY '25, we budgeted $1.925 million. So I'm banking possibly that we're going to get more than that by $200,000, and I will ask you to put, vote, put that in the transportation revolve reimbursement fund. That must be used in the following year to offset community assessments for transportation. So that's where that comes from. The next piece in this section is excess and deficiency. Again, that's the school's savings account, similar to free cash in a town. We're proposing using $250,000 in this line for that, and I'll talk about E and D in another slide, actually, next slide. So that leaves this section, this operating section of community assessments, the second red number, $700,930. The third component of a community assessment is capital. So you can see we have $500,000 there. That's the 450 plus the 50, if vehicles, 500. We're proposing offsetting half of that, or 250, with the E and D, leaving $250,000 for assessment piece. We currently do not have any debt service, so there's no debt component into the assessment. So you take those red numbers, 1, 2, 3, add those up, and you get total assessments for the communities of $13,178,539, which is an increase of approximately $760,000 or 6.11%. The next slide talks, so certified excess and efficiency. I don't know that number yet. I have to submit all of the books of the school to the Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue. They perform a calculation, they look through everything, and then they certify, certify our excess and deficiency account. So right now, I can't give you the certified number. I can tell you that I project us to be between $1 million and $1.2 million in that certified E and D account. We could have 1.6 to be at our cap, at our 5% before you have to give it back to the communities. So we propose using 500,000 out of that 1 to 1.2. We put money into the stabilization account each year, small amounts, which is going towards more of our mid-range capital items. So we try to fit capital into that 400 to 450 amount each year, the projects that we do. We're putting money into the stabilization account to try to do those higher, that six, $700, $800,000 repair, like the main electrical gear that we, you know, Mike's having engineering studies done on, things like that, so that we can maintain a consistent assessment to the communities, and we can draw on the capital stabilization fund to pull, help offset those expenditures. And our OPEB account, which is small, but it's there, I think I said that in Westminster Monday night, Mr. Fairbanks, I thought, offered to fund it for us, but he didn't. So we have 50,000. We have to have an actuarial study done every two years. This is for your other post-employment benefits. So taking a look at all our retirees and all our active employees, the actuary does whatever they do, not an actuary, they, and they calculate out what they think our liability is throughout the life of everybody, based on our costs and everything. Our current OPEB liability is somewhere around $34 million. Not funding that right now, but we put money, we have an irrevocable trust set up that we, that the school committee votes through the budget to put in money into each year. So we are continuing to start to fund that. So that's the account balance there. And again, those are as of the end of June, so when I put money in from FY '25 budget, that will go up a bit. The next slide kind of shows you a comparison of the budget, a couple of actual years, the current year we're in, and then what we're proposing for FY '26. So you can see down here, transfer to OPEB fund, 20 grand for FY '26, and transfer to stabilization fund, $30,000 for FY '26. Otherwise, this is a comparison, and in your actual budget books that you have in front of you, we posted on the website, you can see more detail of what's going on here. The next slide gives you a breakdown of some of the larger expenses that make up that $1.1 million increase. So as I said to you earlier, salaries and payroll tax. We have a 3% COLA contractually for next, for FY '26, as well as when you have step and column movements, that is a $580,000 increase to next year's budget. Remember, we're getting $259,000 additional chapter 70 money, so it doesn't even get there, right, just in that. Then our fringe benefits, so I'm projecting a 5% increase in health insurance, this also includes dental, life insurance, et cetera, for that, it's another $438,000. Utilities and insurance, so that insurance is workers' comp, property, comprehensive liability, those insurance policies. We're looking at approximately a $96,000 increase there. And then in the supplies and the equipment, even though we did make significant reductions in what our, our shops and academic programs were looking at, we still have a small increase in that account of $103,000 for a couple of pieces of additional equipment and their supplies to run their programs. Our transportation contract, it's later on in the agenda. I'll be looking to ask the committee to approve optional year four of our transportation contract. So we're ending year three of our original bid, we're going into year four, and you'll look, that's a really small increase. Couple of the, because we bid it out by the route, so we work with three bus companies. One of our bus companies only had a 2.4% increase into this fourth year, one only had a 4%. They were very reasonable compared to what's out there for buses. And one of our contracts, we were able to cut a bus, so that saves about $100,000 right there. So that's why that's really a low increase. The next line is a breakdown of minimum contributions by member town. So you can see each town and how they compare year to year. And we'll talk about on the next slide how that gets calculated by the state each year. This is a snapshot of all the communities. We go up by 12, and the change for communities, it goes up in total by $581,360. I'll use Westminster again, because we were just there Monday. They went down a student and up $41,362 in their required contributions, minimum. And again, that was based on the state calculation. So it's tough out there. Okay, next one, I'm picking on Holden, they have our largest increase, but they also go up 10 students. But this is a sample, your individual towns are in front of you, it follows the same model as I'm going to tell you about Holden, it's done exactly the same way. So you start with your, your 2024 equalized valuation, so that's your community's property values as of 2024. You can see Holden's. Then they take the uniform property percentage, so that .3243% is for every community, no matter who you are, that's the same percentage, they multiply your property value by to get your local effort from your property wealth. So in Holden's case, they take the numbers and they come up to their effort from property wealth is $12,352,741. The next section is the income of the residents. So they use the 2022 income, they multiply it out by the uniform percentage. Again, every community has 1.5699% as their percentage, they multiply that out, and the local effort from income for Holden, $16,965,57. So they take row three, and they add row six to it, and they say Holden's combined effort yield is $29,313,298. That's what the state says Holden can afford to contribute towards its school districts. Then they take the foundation budget of its school districts. So this is Wachusett, Holden's, Holden's piece of Wachusett, plus Holden's portion of Monty Tech to get the $44 million. They do a maximum local contribution, so that's 82.5%. So even the wealthiest of wealthy communities that can far exceed what their foundation budget is, the state still gives them 17.5% state aid. That would be your Cambridges, your Wellesley's, your Westons, they still get at least 17.5%. So they take, they say what's smaller, what the town can afford to pay or the 82.5%. So in Holden's case, the 20, what it can afford to pay is less, so that's row 10, $29,313. We scoot over to the right-hand side. So now we say, what is Holden paying FY, this year, for their required local contribution? Well, Holden is currently paying to Wachusett and Monty Tech, $24,864,840. Again, that's just their required local minimum piece. They multiply that out by the municipal revenue growth factor, again, determined by the Department of Revenue on your community's growth, prop 2.5 limits, new revenues coming in, this whole, whole calculation that goes into that. So for Holden, it's 4.13%. Every community is different, so your community here will have a different percentage. They multiply They multiply that out and they get their FY '26 preliminary contribution, 25,891,758. They compare that number to Row 7, what they think Holden can afford. That number is smaller, and that number is smaller by Row 21, 3,421,540, or 7.71%. So the state says, well, we want, we need to keep increasing what Holden's paying so we can get them to where we think they can afford, to that 29 million. So it says, if your shortfall is between 2.5 and 7.5%, we're going to increase you by 1%. If it's above 7.5%, which in Holden's case it is, they're going to increase it by 2%. So they take, they take your Row 15 and they multiply that by 2%. So for Holden, they're going to add an additional 497,297 to what they calculated for their FY '26. So Holden's new required contribution to Wachusett and Monty Tech for FY '26 is 26,389,055. The next slide, and you have the second slides also for your town, shows you how that gets apportioned out to the school districts that belong to Holden. So there's one Holden student listed, I need to presume that that's Aggie student, separate. So you can see Wachusett, so the top half is just what's happening this current year. The bottom half is where we're looking at FY '26. So you can see Wachusett's foundation enrollment is 3,120. Again, that's Holden's piece. Holden's piece of Monty Tech's foundation enrollment is 158 students. To get, to get how much Holden's foundation budget is of Monty Tech, they take that 158 students and they multiply it by the first number I kind of told you to remember, 20,820 per student, that we talked about back in the foundation budget, when I set the 30 million divided by 1488. That's how they attribute Holden's portion of Monty Tech's foundation budget. The enrollment times the 20,800 per pupil, that's where they get the 3,296,49. They do the same thing for their apportionment to Wachusett as well, they just multiply it by the per foundation, per pupil spending for Wachusett. Monty Tech represents 7.42% of Holden's, of the total foundation budget for Holden. So they take 7.42% of the 26,389,055, and that's how they calculate their required contribution to Monty Tech of 1,957,220. So you can see, in our case, they go up 10 students, and that's 249,792. In the case of Wachusett, they go down 78 students, but up still, 1.3 million. So it's driven, it's not, it's not solely enrollment, it's driven by this wealth factor that the state uses.
The increase in Holden was over 1 million?
So for, so for Wachusett, the increase for Holden, for their required local, was 1.3. For us, their increase was 250,000. So their total minimum contribution went up 1.5 mil this year between their two school districts. That's just their required minimum, on top of operating, capital, et cetera. So that's, that's how each and every, that happens with each and every community, how it's calculated. So the next slide will show you. So we have foundation enrollment, every town's foundation enrollment. To get the foundation budget number, you multiply your number of kids times that 20,800, et cetera, to get the foundation budget required minimum. I just showed you how it's calculated for Holden, that's how it's calculated individually for each community. The one that says Column 2, Transportation and Operating, that's your community's piece of our operating assessment. So how we get that is your foundation enrollment divided into the total foundation enrollment equals your percentage of the operating cost, your community's, and that gets apportioned out there. The next one for capital assessment, remember, we had a net of 250, we saw in our budget summary. So that is driven by your community's school attending children. So that number's used two ways. I get it each year from your superintendent of schools, grades 1 through 12, school attending children. You take your town's number divided into the total school attending children for all our district, and that becomes your percentage of our capital quota. That is a capital apportionment. Then that percentage in turn is used when you're voting later for the freshman quota, 360. That percentage is used to calculate your quota of the freshman class. And you can find that number in your budget booklets, it's a yellow and white kind of page that says enrollment. It's, you'll see it in your budget books, you'll be able to find your percentage there. The last slide here is a comparison of where Monty Tech is in per pupil expenditures as compared to the other regional vocational technical schools in the state. So we, I sorted it highest to lowest, and as I've reported out for the past several years, when you see this slide, we're in the bottom third of per pupil spending expenditures of 23,913 per pupil, only, only slightly larger than a couple of our others, and then we have those there. So thankfully, we have an awesome grant writer, because this would look different if we get so much funding and grants, our general fund budget would look very differently. So we have to, and if federal grants go away, Title I, special ed, or if they lessen, our general fund budget's going to look very different. We do the best to keep it as low as we can for our communities. It is getting increasingly harder, you know, but we, we put, you know, pen to paper and sharpen that pencil and stuff, but things to keep in mind as, as the committee, this is your budget, but just things to keep in mind moving forward as we hear what's happening at other levels of the government. And so that, that, my friends, is it. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Next, next item I presented is public comment. Does anyone here have a, remember the public, have you commented on any presentation? If not, if they want to move to the minutes, or if they're already in front of the table, we can all.
So move.
Second.
The district committee wants to include the minutes of the regular meeting of February 5th, 2020, as presented.
Second. Any further comments or questions on the minutes? If not, Julie, if you want to, if you want to hold up?
All right. Wait for Donnie to bring it up. All right, I think we're good, Donnie. All right, so just a couple of quick introductory slides, you know, knowing that we had some big items, I didn't want to have too long a presentation, and obviously wanted to focus a little bit on the admissions proposal. But I apologize, I must have missed it in December, that I missed our usual couple every month's update on co-op. But as you can see, at the end of February, we're already up to 228 kids on co-op, which is only seven fewer than we had for the entire year last year, and last year set a record for the number of kids we had out on co-op, so my guess is we're going to have another breaking year. So again, congratulations in the great work that Kim Curry does, that our vocational instructors do and everything else, and obviously to all our industry partners, who this obviously wouldn't be happening if they weren't willing to take folks on board. So fantastic job at co-op and hope they keep going big, so that's a good thing. As we just kind of talked about, budget season is underway. You can see on the left are who we are meeting with and current dates in terms of finance committees or advisory committees. The ones that say WAVES typically, typically are the communities that don't necessarily ask us to present to a, to a finance committee or anything else like that. So a few of them will vary, I think we had, you know, as Tammy mentioned, we had Westminster this week, I think there'd been some time that we had been, that we hadn't been there, so this was the first time we had been there for a bit. So that will come and go. You'll see that there are a few, a couple towns that we're not quite sure about the date, we haven't seen, we checked the websites and we couldn't find any dates. If you represent that town and you happen to know what the actual town meeting time is, that'd be great, just feel free to let us know and we'll add those. And then Fitchburg and Gardner are just blocked out because those are city council meetings that they have, they don't necessarily do town meetings, obviously. But very excited to, we do, you'll, you'll see, there are a couple dates where we have multiple meetings, sometimes Tammy and I will handle that, especially for the town meetings, that one of us will go to one, one will go to the other. There are a couple times that we might need to rely, you know, we need to rely on, for instance, Diane, to kind of represent us for the Ashfordham Town Meeting, because we have several other meetings that night as well, so. But looking forward to it. Another thing that we're all, I don't know if we're all looking forward to, we all knew was coming. So as I've mentioned to you, I sent out some emails, the Department of Elementary and Second Education has officially sent out their proposal for the new admissions policy for vocational schools. Here is the basic kind of descriptor that they had, some of the, and these are the actual words used within the, the policy, if you take a look at it. But basically, what they are saying is, if you have more, if the district has more applicants than available seats, that students should be, should be accepted for admission by lottery conducted by the career technical education school or program. A couple things there, one, randomly, they felt the need to get rid of the word vocational, and so you'll see that vocational has been crossed out and replaced by career technical education throughout the policy. There were a couple superintendents that got fired up and said, well, they better not tell me that I have to change the name of my school because we have vocational in our school and we're not going to change that. I would be very surprised if they tried to pull that one off, so I don't think that's going to happen. What I did do though, and you'll see in a lot of the things, is that one of the concerns that's in this language, where it talks about all lotteries for career technical education school or program seats shall be conducted in a public place and with reasonable public notice, that, the second half of the piece, that's fine, is the phrase program seats. What does DESI mean by program? Our concern with the folks at MAVA is that program could mean exploratory, it could mean freshman placement. And as we all know, lottery, holding a lottery for freshman placement is, I'll speak for myself, I'll let you guys have your own, would be a very bad thing, I think. I think I mentioned to you that ACABET did put in a lottery, and we have heard nothing but bad things about it, to be perfectly honest with you. So you'll see in several of these, the slides I'm going to show you, the phrase program seats, that hasn't been defined yet, that's going to be part of the process that we're going to ask them to define.
I mean, has there been any, through the chair, what I had heard before in the meetings and other sessions, it always felt like that was about, like a 74 program inside of another place that had seats available, not selection to a program, right? And I haven't heard anybody at all mention about programs.
That's what we're hoping they're talking about, but again, they haven't defined it, so we're just a little bit nervous. It's, it's a vague term.
Mr. Hurley, did ACABET's lottery, was it for individual programs?
Yes. Yeah, so literally, they took the freshmen, they threw them into a hat and pulled by the shop. So, so, so any kid who wanted particularly to be in plumbing, they threw in all the kids into the names and they just pulled names out. So literally, you, to be honest, you could have gone through plumbing, literally not done any of your work during explore, not learned anything, not showed you, and you, if your name gets pulled, you're in plumbing.
So the proposed admission policy?
Because this was, what was put before the Board of Elementary and Second Education, they chose not to vote on it, so right now, it's only the proposed policy, this policy has not been passed yet. So the earliest they would vote on it will be March 10th.
There's some dates in here, how does that impact us for next?
In terms of the start dates and everything else, those are still in place.
Is that here what we currently have to?
No, there's some changes, for instance, for the end date, they're saying they want it, all applications done by March 1st, we go to April 1st. The start date, I don't know if we have an official start date, we're always, thankfully, we're always joined by Chrissy, Lamy when we have these conversations, we kind of just start in the fall, right? We don't have a real start date, they just want to make sure that we have applications out to districts and everything else by a certain time, so.
Mr. Malor.
Thanks. I'm confused, does the lottery occur when in the sequence of events?
So the way the lottery is get, so if the closing date for applications is March 1st, soon after that time, cutting ahead a little bit, but by town, we would be doing it, you're allowed to do it by town, you would take all the names of the kids who qualified for this, because yeah, this is a qualified lottery technically, we'll talk about attendance and discipline, you put the names in and you pull them out, and that's.
And that gets a student into the school?
Correct.
Not into a vocational?
No, that's just to get into the school, correct, yeah.
Two.
Say it again?
Would be two.
What do you mean two?
If they choose to do one for trade?
Yes, they're, yes, we, yeah, we're, again, I, I agree with Eric that this is what we're, we believe it could be, but we just don't like the fact, and there's, there's one, I'll give you it towards the end, there's one time where it really makes you sound when you read it, you're like, oh gosh, I really think they're talking about explore there, but we'll, we'll get to that in a second, so.
The entry lottery would not also include program lottery?
As of now, it does not. As of now, it's just to get into the school.
Yeah, just an opinion, it doesn't make sense to have somebody choose a vocational lottery without an exploratory. If that were the case, that premise being that that's the way to send it up?
Yeah, that, we, I would agree with you, yes. All right, so they also say that such, again, that such, obviously, we conduct electronically and selection must be random. If there is a local agreement among sending districts concerning seat allocations, career technical education schools and programs, may be, may run a lottery for each sending district consisting with the seat allocation requirements of total agreement, of the local agreement, so that's what we were just talking about. So they would honor quotas, I, I think I mentioned in the email, we're in good shape there. One of the things that DESI has spoken about is they wanted to know, is this in your district agreement, is the seat allocation your district agreement, or is it just a practice that you have during the admissions process? So some of the districts don't have it in their district agreement, we do, so we absolutely are allowed to keep it. But the ones who, there's some concern that DESI might say, well, if you only guys were just using as a practice, it hasn't been, you know, made of full regulation, people haven't voted on it, but we'll see what happens there. So that's just the introduction there. So the selective criteria, schools and programs, again, whose admission policies include selective criteria, may apply this criteria only when there are more applicants than available seats. So you can use these two criteria. Attendance, which should be, what, what DESI has defined it to be, is for a period of no more than two school years prior to acceptance, provided only 10 or more unexcused absences per school year may be considered. technical education schools and programs, may run a lottery for each sending district consisting with the seat allocation requirements of total agreement, of the local agreement. So that's what we were just talking about. So they would honor quotas, I think I mentioned in the email, we're in good shape there. One of the things that DESI has spoken about is they wanted to know, is this in your district agreement? Is the seat allocation your district agreement? Or is it just a practice that you have during the admissions process? So some of the districts don't have it in their district agreement. We do, so we absolutely are allowed to keep it. But the ones who, there's some concern that DESI might say, "Well, if you only guys were just using it as a practice, it hasn't been, you know, made of full regulation, people haven't voted on it." But we'll see what happens there. So that's just the introduction there. So the selective criteria, schools and programs, again, whose admission policies include selective criteria, may apply this criteria only when there are more applicants than available seats. So you can use these two criteria. Attendance, which should be, what DESI has defined it to be, is for a period of no more than two school years prior to acceptance, provided only 10 or more unexcused absences per school year may be considered. The first concern with that was, that we picked up on is, you don't get two full years of data. You're doing this process, as we already talked about, starting March 1st. So you're not getting two full, you're not getting all of 7th grade and all of 8th grade. You're getting all of 7th grade and part of 8th grade. So to say that it's about, it's based on two school years, just kinda shows a lack of understanding of how this is, all the data's collected and how it's done and everything else. Immediately at the board, if you didn't watch the video, which I don't blame if you didn't, super long meeting, folks on the board immediately questioned that 10 absences was too low. And frankly, there were some who had concerns about including attendance as selective criteria at all. We obviously have some concerns, we, I'm saying myself and the other superintendents at MAVA folks, because we do know, students who have excessive absences, we have programs that have, you know, hours that count towards training, the whole A week, B week. If you miss four days of an A week and then you come back, now even by the time you're coming back to the next A week, it's been weeks since you've been sitting down doing academics and everything else. So concerns there, which I'm saving a slide, I guess. And discipline, discipline, we've said, it's always kinda, it's still currently now, Chrissy will tell you, 97% of the kids, if not 98% of the kids, score full points for discipline in our current system, because it's really just Chapter 37 H and a half, which is weapon to school, assaulting a staff member, drugs and illegal substances. Or if they get a suspension of more than 10 days for Chapter 37 H 3 and 3/4, which is kind of your basic, I'll call it basic infractions, but a lot of those, it's rare that you're gonna get one that's gonna be over 10 days. To be honest, most schools will kinda go, kind of like on a seven or eight day kinda thing for some of those consequences. Yes?
Yeah, sort of a, maybe a loaded question, but about a dozen years ago, did it make it near impossible to expel or suspend students?
So it's not, you're not, you're off a little bit, but you're not wrong. So what they did was they basically said that you can expel a student, but you still kind of own that student. You still have to make sure that that student is getting some type of education, whether it's at a special program, at an alternative school, or something like that. So they don't, they don't necessarily, you don't have to have them remain in your school, but expelling isn't kinda what you're saying, John, is that it's not like the kid's gone and you're done with them. There's still responsibilities that that district has to make sure that that kid is getting some type of education.
But even on suspension too, in other words, suspension used to be more common relative to the same infraction 10 years ago than it is today?
Yeah, so the big push for the last many years, if you wanna go closer, or more recent than, as far back, DESI absolutely wants suspension to be the absolute last resort. Their concern was that there were too many schools that would quickly just say, "You're out, you know, you're out for two days, you're out for three days, you're out for four days." So alternative consequences are really the big push now. So again, that counts, that cuts down the number of folks that are getting suspensions.
So in my opinion, it seems like this is really a non-criteria.
You can say that.
Yeah.
Yes, we agree on two things already. So, so you're still allowed to use these, and all that these do, again, these are not scored, as long as the kid, or the applicant, I should say, fits the, doesn't, you know, meets the, so the kid doesn't have a 37 H and a half of suspension days, the kid only has seven absences, then that qualifies them for the lottery. You have a kid who has, currently, if they're gonna stick with 10, 10 or more absences, their kid has 25 absences, I'm gonna go big, that student would just not qualify for the lottery, so they wouldn't get their name in. So again, this selective criteria isn't being scored, isn't being used to rank kids or any way or anything like that, it's simply to determine if the kid's eligible to be put into the lottery. And then there's this other piece in terms of the selective criteria, that I'm particularly concerned about is, they're asking that schools continue, that if you are going to use these two items of selective criteria, that you still have to do a data study and a validation study to show that it's important and essential to have this selective criteria. My concern, especially now, since we're going into a lottery, when we go into a lottery and the names are being pulled randomly, because it must be a random lottery, how can we control any of the factors of the selective criteria piece? It's completely thrown out the window. So we're gonna have to see, and keep in mind again, and we all kinda, well, we giggled, but not really giggled, that once again, DESI presented their data or made references to the data, which is the exact data that all the schools keep asking for and they keep refusing to give us. So we still haven't seen all that data yet, but anyhow, for ourselves. All right, so some of the responsibilities, we have to submit selective criteria, sorry, what we're doing annually to the state, which has kinda been in place, you know, already. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So no more interview?
No more interview.
No more indication of desire to be in a vocational?
I'm gonna get to that in one second, so, but the answer is yes, as of now.
Other than I wanna be in the lottery?
Correct, correct. So, all right, so we have to, we have to submit what, how we're gonna have a plan, admissions recruitment, the addition is retention policy, that's kinda new in there, in terms of having to do things, but we have to have that submitted by November 1st each year. We have to maintain records, this is again, why they're talking about the data that we have to maintain, it's all very similar. You will still be assessed on that data. Again, this is a lottery now, but they're still gonna assess us on who's getting in and who isn't getting in, in terms of students of color, ELL, the special populations.
Well, that's gonna be funny, the lottery doesn't go their way.
That is the, that's gonna be the-
So we're gonna be responsible for their mess-up.
Well, all I can say is, there's, we've had conversations with, how do I say this nicely? We have had conversations with members from DESI where we said, well, that very question, we said, "Well, what happens if we don't see the gains of the special populations?" And their response back was, "But you will."
Yeah, since lottery's been being discussed, it's not our first time we've heard about this, but we've been discussing it for months. I've done a lot of research into lotteries and basically, you know, it sounds, Massachusetts seems to want to try to make it more accessible for people, different races, people, whatever. And the thing is, is the studies show, it actually does the reverse, that people, you know, they're trying to get people, I don't know what terms to use, minorities and stuff like that. Everything I've read in the studies I've looked up, the lottery does exactly the opposite. And now they're, now you're telling us they wanna hold us responsible if those numbers, they don't meet the numbers that they want. It's gonna be our fault that their lottery miss, doesn't work.
They are saying that they're going to hold us responsible for data, that's all I can-
Absolutely, with data.
Yes. Well, well, they, they, we don't know how they're then gonna say, we don't know if they're gonna say that we looked at your numbers and the number of students of color isn't at the number that we want it to be, we don't know what the reaction or what the response is gonna be at this point, so.
Well, if they put out the regulations and it doesn't work, it's up to them to fix it.
I'm with you, sir.
Mr. Malika first?
Yeah, I don't know why I'm saying this, but.
Go ahead, John.
It just seems that they have criteria and they're using a random process to make it happen. That really makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say one other thing too, it's so darn easy to get in here now, without having guests, it's just so darn easy to get in.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember all I learned in statistics 50 years ago, but my feeling is, you know, to answer some of the concern, I'm gonna say, from my point of view, yes, you could have a lottery, random lottery, in Fitchburg, and every student is a white male selected, if you have enough white males to fill the court. You could have that. Personally, you could have a lottery that's all females of color get into Monty Tech. To me, it isn't like any one lottery that you're looking at, it's a sequence of lotteries over time. Over time, it should go to the average, and if you're a 50-50 split, it should over time average to 50-50. One year you're 80, 75, 25, and next year you're 25, 75. Where it's interesting, where they're talking about having us look at it, to me, it's not the lottery itself, it's behind law, and our students being discouraged from entering the lottery because they're being advised not to, what's your name? And is that, is that advice coming, you know, again, if you look at the pool, that pool of lottery applicants in Fitchburg and they all happen to be white males, what's going on? That piece to me isn't a test, well, that's a Fitchburg old school problem. They're the ones generating that.
And we're gonna be talking a little bit with that other side.
Well, Mr. Brooks, if you took statistics 50 years ago, you remember something. Because I talk and I don't remember it.
All right, and then one of the last responsibilities that they have there is, we already kinda talked about, is the new deadline, so again, November 1st, making sure you start by then, and that you make sure that you finish up by March 1st. All right, so this kinda speaks just to what Calvin was talking about. So they did, this was a big piece, because if you saw any of the Board of Ed meetings, Board of Ed really took it into heart, the idea that, they learned that, yes, there are, I mean, thankfully, we all know we do have some of our sending districts that aren't as participatory as we would like. There are some other districts where it's really bad, where they're getting blown off by many of their sending districts. So they heard those complaints and they made sure they kinda put in a little bit more. So they did basically say that the schools now had to make sure that we had all the proper information, the contact information for all their, all the incoming 8th graders, that they were provided with all that information, that they posted the information about the vocational school on their website. I will say, Chrissy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, our districts do a really good job about getting us the information, yeah, so that is one thing that really we've done very well with. The sending districts of the middle school, they can't, if a kid comes to tour with us or to visit us, they can't count that as a unexcused absence. And really quite to get down to the last bullet, they basically say they, I'm sorry, they can't deny tour day. So if we're setting up tour day, they're supposed to have all their kids and they're supposed, all their 8th graders come to tour day and everything else. Again, they're really trying to push and say they need to be part of this access. And all that becomes part of in that last bullet there, but they're calling the middle school pathway exploration policy, where each of the middle schools, so if we have to come up with an admissions policy and submit that to DESI, the sending districts now are gonna have to come up with their exploration policy, and they too are gonna have to submit that to DESI for approval, and they too, their superintendent will have to sign an attestation saying, "Yes, we're doing it," just like I have to sign the attestation saying, "We're doing the vocational piece."
Mrs. Swinton?
Have you, yeah, I have to remember, joke at this, with the middle school pathway exploration policies that they have to come up with, has Mav or anybody talked with some of the middle schools to see how they're feeling about all of this?
I, not that I know of, but I, I don't, no, they didn't talk about, they just, like you said, I think they heard that this was a concern, and they wanted to do something to address it.
No, I know that, I mean, the actual middle schools.
Yeah, how they came up with, I'm not sure how they-
Yeah, or what the reception was of the middle school superintendents for coming up with this, because it seems like they're putting a lot of the responsibilities now back to the middle school.
What I will say is that throughout this entire process, there has not been one time where DESI has sat down with either vocational administrators, which tells me that I'd be very surprised if they sat down with middle school administrators, so.
I see there's a lot of things in here that we must do and have to do and implement this and implement that. I'm guessing there's no funds to come along with these mandates?
Uh, no.
Boy, you're a comedian.
There is not. Well, I mean, I'll, I'll give you an example of one that's going to happen, and I think it's-
How do we budget for this?
It's in, it's in one of the, I might not have added on to the slide, but for instance, for the tour day piece, we're now gonna have more kids coming for tour day. The cost of picking those kids up are gonna be given to vocational districts, so we're gonna be spending more on tour day as we go and pick the kids up and everything else.
It's not part of the pathway program?
It is.
Should be the sending, if it sends us there.
Their part of it is they have to participate and they have to have all, allow all kids to go on and not count it as an absence.
But is it our responsibility to go get them, or is it their responsibility to send them with their school buses?
Transportation, transportation's on us.
It's always on us?
Yes.
Is that statewide, the way it works?
That's, yes, it's, yes, in the policies, it'll be statewide, so.
So should we ask more?
Yes, I, I don't, sorry, Evelyn?
So I'm just wondering, with this whole new lottery system that they're thinking about, do they have a policy if you have a town that doesn't completely fill all of its seats, like what happens to those students for?
Great pickup, Evelyn, the answer is, they don't give any guidance on that. So that is something that we have, we as MAVA have said, "Well, what about?" As everybody knows, Harvard never fills. So what I'm speculating is, as strange as it'll be, is it won't be a by-town, it'll be literally taking every single kid from every single town, throwing them into the bucket, or whatever it's gonna be, and we pull out, if Harvard has seven unfilled spots, we pull out seven numbers and they're in, so.
Dr. Trig?
They have really huge issues.
That's why we're asking for the guidance, I may be, you know, that's what I'm speculating they're gonna do, they might have a plan, they just may not have added it to the proposal, the policy, so, so I can't guarantee that's what they're going to do.
It says that where, where there are more applicants than available seats, and if the district agreement dictates seat allocations, in the case where there weren't students exceeding those seats for that community, there would be no lottery.
Correct, every kid will get in, but the-
And then those seats go to our waitlist, which is our policy, right?
Well, that's, but that's what Evelyn's asking about, and they don't define that.
And that's our policy currently?
Correct, but they're creating a whole new policy here that we gotta follow, so we don't know which way they're gonna be doing that.
But that's what's in our local agreement?
Right, but our local agreement says, "You go to the kid who has the highest score." We don't, we don't have highest scores, because this stuff isn't getting scored. So there is no score to go to. So that's why I'm saying, the only thing that I think that it's gonna be is throw everybody's name in and you pull all the-
So it invalidates our district agreement?
No, 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 because, because the district agreement speaks to allocation and everything else. Process, in terms of how we do, that's in our admissions policy. So what they are gonna say is, yes, there might be parts of our admissions policy that we're gonna, well, there's tons of parts of our admissions policy we're gonna have to change, so. All right, sorry, I'm kinda taking so long here. So basically, and I've hit a lot of these concerns that we've already talked about. Number one, by the way, is the most biggest, or the most biggest, that's a really good phrase, is the biggest. The fact that this does not even address the problem. The problem is, there's not enough capacity. Again, we're shuffling things around and still there are going to be thousands of kids who still don't get in. Hopefully that gets addressed by the budgets and everything else, but we'll see.
Not, not to get ahead of anything, but with that particular statement, did you, were you ever throw in about our MVP program? How that's becoming very successful in trying to solve that problem right there with our MVP program?
We, again, they haven't even sat down and talked with any of us, so the answer's no. Keep, I should add, the last two meetings, you may have noticed, we all drive into Everett to support because we're sitting down to do public comment. We got kicked from public comment both the last two meetings, so those superintendents were allowed to give a comment. So the answer is no, we haven't been able to share any ideas or anything with them, so.
I was gonna say, because I think the MVP program is such a-
Oh, certainly.
-forward way of looking at trying to solve the true problem-
Correct.
...and says this ridiculous stuff.
Yes.
Won't it actually have the exact opposite effect? We're gonna have more students applying to get in here?
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
We can only accept the same amount of students.
Right, hundred percent.
It's gonna look like more kids in our district get less access to vocational education.
Correct. Let's see. Oh, so, Mr. Borsard, you had asked, so number two, again, there is nothing in here that speaks to what Bill brought up in terms of student's interest. Again, this student interest, in fact, one one particular member of the Board of Ed really was concerned about the fact that there wasn't this, and really wanted to push for it. There's conversations, it's just people don't know, because again, there's not supposed, we, to be honest, we as a as an admin team, the other day during admin, we're discussing this, and we couldn't come up with a good thing, but there's not supposed to be any scoring. So currently, I think I've told you this, ACABET does interviews, but they don't score the interview. But what they do is they kind of consider the interview as, okay, if the kid is willing to show up, do the interview and everything else, that that indicates that at least they have the gumption, the interest to show up for the interview. What they've talked about here is, I think I mentioned to you at some point, they were talking about, we'll have the kid write something. But then you'd obviously want them to have to write it in front of you, because they'd sit down and on chat, on, you know, ChatGPT, just print out something. They've talked about maybe there's a checklist. So there's a checklist that has multiple different things that are associated, you know, it has VIP, I participated in VIP, I participated in Summer Academy, I came for tour day, you know, something like that. But right now, we don't have anything, but everyone seems to agree that there needs, still needs to be some element of of getting student interest, for the very reason that Bill brought up, is we are going to get many more applicants, simply because they're gonna say, why not just throw my name into the hat and see if I get in, and then I'll make a decision after that happens, you know, that kind of thing.
I, having watched the meeting, I've noticed that piece of it. And my thought is that the interview is a good thing, because I think it gives the students a chance to do something they haven't done before, and it's a first step in their education for for your vocational school. The challenge is how do you how do you do it, because it doesn't count, and is it something that that Monty Tech continues to do, where maybe comes or goes around and interviews all these people just to gauge their interest? Or the middle school guidance counselors do some of that? And I want to say steer the the student to where they should be going, which then creates a challenge, are you encouraging them to go? Because you, or you're discouraging them to go because you want them to stay as a current in the school perspective?
Right.
Yeah, well, you know, good football player, you don't want to go to Monty Tech, because if we know that, well, for education, is winning the state championship football. So.
But we haven't done that in a while, so it's.
I think that's, somehow they have to be in conversation, so kids aren't just randomly
Yeah.
signing up, going to the lottery, win it, coming in here, and then after six months they.
Yeah. One one comment that I would add, building off that, and and we all know that we are blessed to have Chrissy as part of our group, and she does an amazing job. But again, if they would sit down and talk with us, I think we would have the opportunity to tell them that we literally post the questions here at Monty Tech. We literally give them a video that kind of plays it, works it through it. We allow students, obviously, to, if they have a different home language, they, we provide an interpreter for that. There are a lot of things that you can put in place, because the concern for some people on the board for the interview seemed to be that it was, there were inequities, because some students may be nervous, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Or some students may not be able to get to the interview, and Chrissy obviously goes to the middle schools all the time to do the interviews there, we're fortunate enough to get them in there. But I think if they understood that there is a method of doing the interview that could take away, it's not gonna take away all of it, but certainly make it more equitable, that if every kid knows every single question and everything else, and goes through the process, I think it could be done better. We we could still do it, but right now, DESI's not interested in doing interviews.
Marina.
How does this affect our MVP program? Because it's still a trade, trade part, right?
Well, well, each, I mean, they, each, they, each of the sending districts that are participating in MVP did a lottery. So when they, when they picked their students, they did a lottery already, so.
Were they sent random?
Uh, yes, they threw them in.
They sent them in?
Yes. Well, well, yes, I would say, yes, that's obviously that kids.
So if a kid doesn't get into the regular programs, can they also go in the lottery to the MVP, is that what's gonna change?
Well, they'd have to wait to, they'd have to wait till they were juniors, obviously.
Oh, I get you.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm sorry, yes, I gotta speed up. So we talked about the problems of taking out student attendance, we don't wanna see that necessarily happen, we'd like to see something with student attendance. Again, the data piece, that they're talking about data that we still haven't even seen. You know, what what happens in the sending district does not mean requirements in terms of access for the middle school. So again, they say they want the middle school people to do this in the sending districts, but what happens if they choose not to? Because I will tell you this much, we have told DESI about districts of ours who haven't been doing things, and nothing ever happened, nothing ever occurred. And then just last but not least, the process, again, so here's the phrase they use, the process for application and admission to the school, as well as admission as admission to particular programs within the school. Just gets a little creepy weird, close to freshman placement and everything else. So anyhow, I'm sorry, I that went on for quite a bit there, but I wanted to make sure that we hit all of the the highlights.
Let's draft the stuff.
Yeah, I think, not to belabor a point, I I think the one that I read through the policy, and maybe there's a difference in what they've said about the sending schools sending students, right? The policy, as I read it, was they're required to not now dock them for coming and attendance, and they can't inhibit them from coming, but that doesn't mean that they have to allow an entire class to come, or promote it, or whatever else, right? Like, it didn't read that it was.
There is one phrase, I thought I pulled out, that does kind of make it say that they they have, so I had that up there, so if the career technical school program confirms the student's participation, they may not withhold student access to tours of career, so.
Yeah.
So if they're, as long as they're honoring the tour day, they can't pick and choose the kids that get on or anything like that.
So I guess if we show up the bus in the in the bill in front of the school, students who wanna get on the bus can get on the bus, right?
Correct, I mean, but go the other way, if a kid says, I don't wanna go, and the kid doesn't have to go, that's for sure.
And and do we have a sense from, so it's action steps, I guess, of this, right? We're still waiting on the board to vote this policy, this draft policy?
Yep, so so again, when they they started the meeting, they immediately saw the attendance was gonna be a question, so they decided to table everything. They created a special meeting that's happening this Monday. Right now, it's scheduled from five to seven, which seems a little bit weird for different reasons, but I'll make sure that I I send out the link to everybody for that. One thing I also might share with you is we have been encouraging school committee members, superintendents, I'm gonna send out something to our our state reps and everything else too, to basically kind of address some of these concerns that we have. And I'll share that with everybody, what I sent out, and if you, and I'll share you the emails for our various, for the members of the board and everything else, if you as school committee members wanna send something along, we would strongly encourage it. And if you wanna use the kind of letter that I send you as a model, feel free to do that. It's funny, so.
Mr. Rem.
No, he actually, he actually got it, but thank you.
All right.
John? Just one thing, a positive note, because I did sit there and listen for four hours, so I learned a lot about charter schools. And and the final end of the conversation, as I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, it was one gentleman, and unfortunately, I do not remember his name, but he said, yes, all of this with the lottery being, paraphrasing, being talked about is appropriate for for doing the lottery, but we're not getting to what the problem is. And the problem is, we need more schools, we need more seats in the schools, and even though there's seventy five million, or something like it.
There is money allotted, as well.
There's some money being allotted, that is not gonna be sufficient to have schools be built or added to, could be either one, to satisfy the needs of how many students wanna go to vocational tech, go to career technical education. So there were, and there was a gentleman that agreed with him, that's right there. So there were two, so there are a couple people, and this is on the Board of, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, yes, it was, so that's important. So they did recognize it, so I thought that was finally something positive.
All right, and and super, I'm sorry, Tom, but super quickly, because just Diane talking about the board itself, one of the things that everybody knows, some of the superintendents got all fired up, and were like, we need to fight back, it's scorched earth, they were throwing out some terms, I'm like, relax, this is not war. But we made sure that everybody understands, the current makeup of the board, there are a couple members who are very pro vocational, they've been supporting us all along the way. Two of those members, their term, they were appointed by Governor Baker, their terms are up in June, so they will be gone in June, they will be replaced by two members picked by Governor Healy. Governor Healy has, just being open and honest, has been understood to be a supporter of lottery in general. She may wanna go blind lottery, we don't know. So there are, there's some thoughts about this might be the best we're gonna get it in terms of a qualified lottery, so I just wanna make sure that folks who think that a prolonged fight might be a good idea, it might not be a good idea, so.
All right, let's move on, we've spoken a lot of agenda.
Yep, sorry about that.
Out of state field trip, that science?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that the district committee votes to approve an out of state trip for one hundred twenty veterinary science seniors to travel to Brooklyn, Connecticut, to the AKC Confirmation Dog Show, with career opportunities on May ninth, twenty twenty five, from eight AM to two thirty PM, at no cost to the students. Question?
Yes, sir.
We have one hundred and twenty veterinary science seniors?
I just directed it, nine, twelve.
I will.
Very popular.
I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion to twelve students.
That's gonna be a tight ban, I tell you.
Do we have a motion in session that you're in discussion? If you have none, you wanna call the vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that the district committee votes to approve an out of state field trip for house carpentry, cabinet making, and CAD drafting to the JLC Live Trade Show on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, in Providence, Rhode Island, from eight AM to two PM, at no cost to the students.
Second. Second. Discussion. If not, you, I hope.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that the district committee votes to approve an out of state field trip for plumbing students to Viega Educational Center in Nashville, New Hampshire, on March thirty first, twenty, March thirty first, twenty twenty five, from eight AM to two PM, at no cost to the students.
Second. Motion in second, discussion. Seeing none, call the vote. Howard, looks like it's vast. I want to be student representative for the community board, do you have a student representative that lives here tonight?
Yes, you do. I am Mac, hi, I was here one month, I haven't been here in a little bit, though, because school's really fun. So, yes, yes, that's it, I'm leaving now. So for athletics, our winter seasons are wrapping up, a big congratulations to all of our winter athletes and the boys and girls ice hockey team, and some of our wrestlers who competed in their respective state tournaments last week, and spring sports signups are underway. For co-op, we currently have two hundred forty one juniors and seniors participating in their respective trades, and dozens of juniors that are in the process of being signed out. For Skills USA, they have a dodgeball tournament signup that's underway, and the tournament will be held March twelfth, twenty twenty five. District competitions are going to be held on March twelfth, twenty twenty five as well, and seniors will be attending the sale conference on March twentieth. Student Council is hosting the annual Golden Bulldog Awards this Friday, and they are also hosting the annual trivia night on April first. NHS is currently sponsoring their annual Daffodil Days fundraiser, they're also sponsoring a March Madness three V three basketball tournament, that's planned to occur on March thirteenth, with all the proceeds being donated to local mental health organizations, and they're also sponsoring a three by three foot soul tournament for April seventeenth. And then some other miscellaneous things going on, we have Career Awareness Night that's going to be held tomorrow night from five thirty to seven thirty. The Leo Club will be traveling to Boston Children's Hospital on March eleventh. The Drama Club will be presenting Hades Town on April fourth and fifth at seven, and April sixth at two, and the casting crews have been very busy rehearsing and look forward to a great show. An expert from MEFA will be here on Thursday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, to meet with juniors and their parents regarding the college admissions process, and the event is free, and will start at six thirty PM. And finally, Monty Tech's annual job fair will be held May first, twenty twenty five, from five to six thirty PM, and it's a free event, open to the public. That's all.
That was a lot.
I'm presuming that the person sitting to my left is applying to college, and what's MEFA stand for?
I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know, but yeah. I assumed a money thing.
Money, it's money. Thank you, sorry, sorry.
All right. And you?
All right, I was told I have. No, I was told I have one minute, because it's late.
All right, time to move on.
Listen, it's nice and short and sweet, we have an advisory, I know that many of you were able to join us on February twelfth, again, organized by Vocation Director Brian Williams and Karen Heber, again, plays an entire, Mac, thank you, you're amazing, thank you. Karen plays a vital role in making sure that everything's organized and ready to go, and again, as you know, when you come here to Monty Tech, Aimee Allen is ever served here in our school, there's buy cafeteria, staff are culinary, outstanding, amazing, best tasting food ever. So we had a wonderful evening, we welcomed three hundred and fifty members that were here with us. On February fifth, folks from Student Support Services, our school counselors, were able to take seniors to Mount Wachusia Community College for an admissions day, the wonderful thing about that, the students go prepared with their transcript, and literally just sit with an admissions counselor, they they tour the campus, and they actually get their acceptance right then and there, so that was a huge success. And again, it's something, we continue that close relationship with Mount Wachusia, we had approximately sixty seniors who participated. On February fourth and fifth, we also had MCAS retests, will be students that for science, so students who were still in need of of passing the science MCAS at that time, were able to do that with great success. And that is it, you have just upcoming dates, we hope to see some of you here for Career Awareness Night, you know, that's a wonderful night for us to showcase our programs and what we do here for our current students and certainly interested students who wanna come check out our program. And that's it, okay, fast enough?
Eric, can that do us ask questions?
Yell really loud, I guess. So I just wanted to add, because it wasn't in the student comments, and in the principal's report, just so everybody here knows, we do have a cooperative swimming team, that actually, more than sixty percent of the students on it are from Monty Tech.
Yes.
Even though it's a fairly large cooperative swimming team. And we did have five swimmers in this school go to the state competitions and get medal or place in some levels of the state. We have a swim team, we do.
And there were some amazing records that, right?
There were, yes.
Do you wanna highlight one?
Yep. No.
All right, I will. His son Alex broke a record and set a record for himself, which was tremendous. And having a swimmer myself, I know he's being very humble, but Monty Tech represented well. And Alex in his senior year, breaking records was a tremendous culmination of his swimming career for Monty Tech.
Very cool.
Did I see someplace that there was a presentation in the auditorium or?
Yes, so Chrissy, I think this is your three Chrissy of doing that. It's really, that's really intended for new parents, so parents who are new to Monty Tech and really to hear about the admissions process and really, you know, just about the interview process and course selection and such. So it's been extremely successful. We do it starting at 5:00 in the PAC for those parents. And also there's a session at 6:30 in the cafeteria. That one will be in Spanish. And as you know, we have student helpers that are here speaking, you know, multiple languages that we really use during that time. Again, we say to parents all the time, we never want to not have someone show up here and feel that they're not able to communicate with us. So that's something that we want to make sure that we're facilitating and we're providing during that evening as well. And that's turned out to be a wonderful addition to the program as well. And again, Chrissy can do this. It's a half hour, quick, and we do it. The school store will be open that night too, so hopefully people come buy some cool swag.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I know what I'd like to make a comment about would usually be waited till last, but because a lot of the staff starts to trickle out, I'd like to make a comment now. One of the things I've noticed while the staff's here, as most of us know, in New England weather, the weather gets weird. You know, one day we have snow, then it's ice and it's crazy. And as one of the bus drivers, school bus drivers here for the town, for the school, does the town sterling? I'm out there at 5:30 in the morning, all right, when the roads go bad. Especially when we have those flash freezes, you know, the snow melt, you get ice everywhere. And one of the reasons I want to bring this up, I want to make a compliment and I want them to understand as our board recognizes, the facilities here has been phenomenally kept up. When I drive around the roads and I'm hitting ice spots with the bus and seeing some of the poor conditions out there from other areas that aren't being maintained, and then I pull onto our grounds and it's like beautiful. It's well salted, the snow's cleaned up. And I want, I know it's too often we don't recognize the small things, but I get to see it every day. And I just wanted to bring it up to the board that I think the facilities here, they go above and beyond keeping this place. I mean, the walkways, you wouldn't believe how nice just the sidewalks are. And they're salted, there's no ice for the kids. It's phenomenal. I just wanted to bring that up, and I wanted to get it before they left.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Thank you. We all partake in some. All right. And next, yeah, you have the enrollment for that.
I noticed I picked up a new student from Carter. If we had lottery placement, how would that be seen? It goes back to the, yeah, to give guidance. Obviously, we were all very similar. You were very pleased that we put in a place where the student from Monty Tech there was replaced by somebody from that town. I would hope that we keep that, but.
Yes.
Move that the district committee votes to approve setting the enrollment order for the class of 2029 at 360 students.
Second.
Second, do we have any discretion on that? Any question? Yes, sir.
If we do more than 360, we're all like, we've talked about not enough seats for students to go teach, go teach, or career technical education, excuse me. Is it possible to squeeze anybody else in?
So what we basically do is we kind of go by the number that we've kind of been sticking at. It's around 1430 students or so. When you look at the two-year senior, or next year's junior seniors and sophomores, 360 kind of is the number that falls into place. One of the things you have to be careful about is the freshman class. The only place you really see retention frequently is at the freshman grade level. So you have to be prepared. You don't want to put in too many kids because then kids are retained and now you're having trouble finding, you know, schedules and seats and everything else. So this would be, because there's a great job under the estimates and everything else, we have this.
I think, I think you didn't quite answer his question though, which is what can the number be? And how do we get to another number? And if that goes up to say not 1435, but 1500, what would we have to do?
We got to do some serious studies to see if that would be. But the problem is, and I'm thinking of my friends and guidance and everything else is, really, when it gets to August and we're trying to make schedules, it starts to get very interesting. To fill a kid's schedule because of having enough spots.
There's more kids on co-op, it's more open spaces.
It was lovely to see you all.
I guess, I mean, well, we're still here.
Oh, thank you. What happened?
Well, for a fantastic presentation by Victoria Zensky. She's up next. Thank you. Are we ready?
So ready.
All right. Good evening. I hope everybody's still awake. If anybody needs a quick scratch, please take it while I get started. In a very timely conversation, since we're talking so much about exploratory process and freshman placement, I'm here tonight to walk us through the exploratory process as it exists now and give you information about everything that happened and occurred this fall as we navigated freshman exploratory as well as placement. This year, exploratory went from September 9th to the 14th. We did make a change, a little bit of a change in that the pre-explore schedule also built in some social emotional learning and relationship building time. In previous years, we heard from our students that transitioning and consistent transition made it really hard to connect with people. So we made a really big concerted effort to make sure that we were building in opportunities throughout that week. And I'll speak a little bit more about that. I know we do have some new members. So I will let you know, pre-explore, we divide everybody into 21 groups. And we have them visit the vocational programs for roughly one to two periods a day, about four shops a day, five obviously on one day, so that they can visit and hear about every shop, what it is, see some students and hear from them so they get a flavor of what their options are. That is what pre-exploratory is. At the end of pre-explore, we provide a survey to the students. It's an interest survey so that they can tell us what they're interested in spending a full, what shop they're interested in spending a full week in. So then, based on that information at the end of pre-explore, we guarantee that they'll in the next nine weeks at least visit their top three shops. But we give ourselves, they basically cut it in half. We ask for their top 12 shops so that we have some leeway for scheduling. And we schedule them based on their interest over the next nine weeks in one of the vocational programs that they were interested in. So weeks for the exploratory piece, weeks one through nine, and you can see the dates there, represent a different schedule for every student based on their interest. They spend a full week exploring the vocational program. They are graded on a rubric. They do pass a safety test initially. It's not the OSHA test, but it's a safety test to ensure that they're ready to use the tools and equipment. And they are working on projects and completing projects within that week. So they really do get a flavor in exploratory, what the shop is about, what equipment they'll have access to. They're working with some juniors to really understand what's happening there and informing that week. At the end of exploratory, again, they are given a survey to rank their top six choices. And that's where we do our scheduling on. They do right now, based on our policy, need to pass with a 60 or above to be considered for placement in the vocational program at the end of exploratory. That for us happened on January 30th, and their first vocational week was February 3rd. So that was our timeline for the fall. Take the next slide. So when we get to placement time, we work very closely with our vocational director. So he here, he helps us looking and maintaining our shop capacities. So looking at the number of instructors, looking at the space, and looking at what our capacities are. So we did offer those to each and every one of you. We do do parent meetings and share this well in advance, so we do that. We'll actually do it at the end of this year for incoming freshmen, and we revisit it again with parents in the fall when we go through our presentation as well. So each vocational program has a shop capacity. That's how we determine the number of students. Next slide. This year, we had 90, oh, sorry.
Just add to the vocational shop capacity?
Yes.
What is our total vocational shop capacity?
Oh, can I do quick math? I'm tired.
It's nearly.
It exceeds. I'm sorry. I should know that number off the top of my head, and I did jot it on my other one. But it does exceed the number of students that we have. So there's, there are seats. Eric, if Eric, I'll pay Eric later.
For vocation, then we have to pass people more.
Vocationally, you're gonna get a number, but again, you're looking at, we're doing interest-based scheduling. So if you, we'll go over the waitlist and what people wanted. So I guess capacity versus interest, we'll take a look at. All right. I'm gonna get these numbers and Eric's gonna.
408 if I had my math right.
Roughly 408. Thank you. Next coffee's on me. I'll get your water. This year, 94% of our students placed in their first or second choice. So if you take a look at where students ultimately were placed based on their interest, we have 94%. I'm telling you, it's not perfect math when you have the number of students we have and the places they go. But we have roughly 86% in their first choice, eight in their second choice. Third, we have about 10 students, about 3%, fourth, four students. And then really fifth, sixth, we're less than a half percent. And we had three students that did not get any of their top six choices this year. If you go to the next slide, I gave you a really a 10-year history because that to me tells me where our trends lie and what, and what we're seeing across, obviously across time. And where, when you're looking at enrollment, there are your enrollment numbers over the, over the years, your total number of students. This year, we placed 354 students. So certainly if you take that number into account, that's you the answer. But when you look at the fact that really 11 students were not placed in their, in their top six choices, it's something to keep in mind. You can see that trend. I mean, we definitely had months or years that we hit four, 5%. And I think trying to, when this committee looked at balancing out enrollment, we're seeing a little balance in where students are placed, that they are getting a shop that they're interested in being in. To give you shop-specific data for this year, there were seven shops that filled with students that selected it as their first choice, so high interest, and that was dental, electrical, home occupations, house carpentry, ECV, plumbing, and vet science. There is a waitlist in the shops. So dental filled with first choice. They took all their first choices and have nobody on their first choice waitlist. You can see electrical had 13 additional students that were interested, as did house carpentry and plumbing. Those are our highest waitlists at this point. And then I'll bring up later, but I'll remind you, when we talk about MVP and our highest interest, it's holding true. So that, when you look at that data set, it certainly supports it. Health occupations, house carpentry, plumbing, or vet science, ECV, all have waitlists for students. And you can see that number based on interest this year as well. We do have some shops with openings. So Advanced Manufacturing, Business Tech, Cabinet Making, Cosmo Culinary Arts had early childhood in engineering, graphics, and information technology, and I'm gonna point out that date. As of the first day of explore placement, freshman placement, these were the shops with openings. Our, our, our students that didn't get their first choice or none of their top six choices have filled the cabinet making seats. I will let you know the three highest shops in demand of house carpentry, plumbing, and electrical is where they wanted. They have since selected cabinet making. So there have been changes made to this waitlist. I'm giving you a snapshot in time. So I want to make sure you're aware of that as well. As I spoke about a little bit earlier in new this year, previous feedback from our students indicated the need for opportunities to really build connections. This exploratory process, since it's done on interest, their groups that they're with every week, their peer group changes. So we schedule kids based on their interest, but that also means that it shifts over time. So the only consistent piece where they're with the same group of kids is in the academic setting. And I think really listening to kids as they came out of COVID and really trying to build connections, it really, the feedback that they provided us is that connectivity and relationship piece was super important. So we did make some changes this year and really take a look at how we can build that. And we used that pre-exploratory week. We also built into the vocational explorer, not only pre-exploratory, exploratory weeks to build some workshops in and make sure we're connecting with kids. Our freshman guidance counselors, John Lashwa, Alicia Quinn, do a tremendous job of really working together to plan. So based on the knowledge that they had, they developed sessions to meet with students really for the first 80 minutes, periods one and two during that pre-explore week. And the topics was really navigating Power School, a new student information system to them, Schoology, Google Classroom. How did that unwritten curriculum that we assume they come with technological skills, but we're giving them really school-specific skills. Questions and answers with the student panel that they had met when they were going, you know, through tours and working with Ms. Lamy, making that connection, building that kind of connection with those students. We did the explore selection process and just made sure we talked to them in smaller groups, made sure they understood it. Positive study habits. And then going over, what is Skills USA? We talk about it here. It's part of our culture, but we recognize that kids didn't always have that information. And we did some pretty fun things, like a bingo game, a Monty Tech related information, and an ice cream social, and just really tried to build some, some relationships within the freshman class. Just some notable facts. And when we talk about that equity and access, and you're asking what happens with this, with this gender. You can see over the past five years, the genders of student, the freshman class and enrollment has shifted. And what was really kind of interesting, I was up here a couple of years ago and said, you know, we had more males than females. Take a look. More females than males, that our non-binary numbers have increased. What that also equates to when we look at the data is that there are more females placed in non-traditional shops and choosing non-traditional career pathways. So pretty exciting in that past week. It's been awesome to see that when we take a look at access and equity points and work with our teachers, that they are being really mindful and making sure we're. that they are being really mindful and making sure we're including everybody. And when we talk about measures of success, this is certainly something that we use as a measure of success, that everybody feels welcome and able to access vocational program. There are three students, as I said, that didn't get their top choice. They selected an open vocational program, as I said. And as of right now, there have been no withdrawals based on placement. So when we talk about that retention rate, it's important to recognize that our freshmen are still here. And then, as I spoke about, the MVP program is supported by the data about electrical, plumbing, and house carpentry. And I'll wrap this up by telling you, we sent out our surveys to the students for placement on Friday. And we had information in the hands of the students less than a week later. And that doesn't just happen. There are a lot of really hardworking people behind the scenes. So if I don't express my gratitude to our freshman guidance counselors, to Chad Schmider out of the technology office, who takes the lead on the software system that we use to do all of this. That'd help us if that breaks down, because I think he would lose all of us. But we really got it all done in three days. So I want to give accolades to everybody there. Teamwork does make dream work, and there's no I in team. So I certainly appreciate everybody's support and my amazing team that gets it done.
Yes, sir.
Thinking back at the shops with openings, do you know if the shops are surveying the exploratory students? The things they like, things they didn't like? Are they doing the follow-up with exploratory? Kids that went through the exploratory, find out like why they liked the shop, why they didn't like the shop?
Yeah, I think many do, do not. I think it's also an area in the coming weeks as we work on taking a look at our access and equity pieces, that we gather that data and work specifically with different shops and different teachers. And really trying to make sure that we are gathering that data and looking at it through many lenses. And that will be one of them.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. I still remember from 20, just 20 years ago, when we had first places and we're like even 70% with the old system. So it's great to see them getting in their first choices. There's still some, I mean, continued offenders, I'd say, of low enrollment numbers, right? We've seen a couple up and down. I mean, there's also always just the huge outliers that depend upon whatever the class wants. But at some point, I mean, I was doing it roughly here the last three years. But can we put together a history, at least of sort of shop placement trends in time? Because I mean, I think you'd see for sure at least the last three years, house carp, electrical's been forever over, 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 over dozens and dozens. We saw some of the health ones change, vet science when it started came in really big. But I think if we start looking at how, I'm not talking about new programs yet, but at least having that as part of the backdrop in the presentation might be helpful to think about where we want to add the extra seats and what programs we need to add and make sure we have space for those ones that we have more students in.
Following up on that excellent point, how about the underutilized programs? How do we address those or fix those, like business, business technology that 20 seats we had?
So, and that was...
12% openings?
And to Eric's point, I think taking a look at trends, because I certainly will tell you that last year, it filled and it had a waitlist, right? So there are certain trends that we want to take, make a note of and take a look at. And so part of that, to Ross's point, part of that is working with the instructors to look at where there are changes and what happened this year versus last year. I think there's simple data points, but then we've got to unfold and dig a little deeper and take a look at that as well.
So I would assume you monitor the trends year to year to see where the fluctuations are.
I do my best. But I also have to credit our wonderful vocational director, because Vicki doesn't do it all.
Well, you take all the credit, Tom. Take all the credit.
It does become a team effort, and I think we all take a look at that.
No questions, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So there's essentially 57 spots in, like, open shops, not counting the three cabinet making. What essentially happens with those?
So we have, so right now, we keep a first, a first choice waitlist. We do have some movement where students have gotten into a shop and it's not what they thought, and they request for a vocational change. So we do have some movement happening in that capacity. We also have, I'd love to give you every scenario. We do have some parents that their parents didn't agree, and they said, put this, and if you got it. Now we're unpacking that aspect of things. So we do allow for vocational changes up until, up until the beginning of their junior year. They have to have two years in a vocational program. But it also means we keep, we maintain that first choice waitlist. And it also impacts enrollment, and you're looking at bringing in students, grade 10, grade 11. We also bring in new sophomores. So students are able to apply, and so we fill some of those seats with new students starting their sophomore year.
Yeah, one thing is to be that Eric was saying, it's every year seems to be different. I mean, I can remember when culinary and Cosmo and early childcare always booked up, always were overfilled, waitlist all over the place. And you had something like a graphics or a couple of others that were kind of low on the totem pole. But also to the question of, you know, for this one that theoretically woke on, they're performing, put a shop, and I put that in quotes, because they're not really underperforming, but it doesn't seem to be the topic for this particular class. There is, there are times in which the school is going out and talking with those shop teachers, finding out what else needs to be done, you know, are we triggering enough interest in students? So those reviews do go on here at the here if you're happy to be in a shop that seems like it's underperforming and getting good interest today. So I just wanted the new people to know that that's all been done in the past. Trouble is now you're so booked up all the time. But it does change.
I don't know. I think getting 86% of the exploratory screen, pretty good.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, move on. Retirements.
Yep, just two, actually very recent, last few days. We are payroll benefits, we retired Travis Arndt. And I think it belongs to the chemistry teacher retired. We have a cafeteria member, Julie Brown, who's tied. Yep, just two quick appointments. Stacy Gilchow is hired as the head of the end program. Phil Bieszewski, the gardener, is, so part of the equity and access grant that you were required to be a part of by DESI because of some of that concern of car emissions. Part of that grant was to institute a bilingual instructor. So this is a grant-funded position. Posted it, the individual knows that it's only grant-funded for the rest of this year, but will certainly utilize that grant fund if it's supposed to accept the rest of the year.
All right. Any big votes left, considering?
Oh, yes, the voters.
Government's stuff, committee's policy?
Okay. Both of the district committees approve for a second reading. AC, non-discrimination, and ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of gender. And remove, removal of the outdated, redundant, and differently incorporated policies. ACB, harassment. ACD, discrimination on the basis of gender. And ACDF, respectful interpersonal human relations. These three policies are included in the initial outdated policy, AC. And this is the second reading. That's it. They're all in.
All right. We have the motion, we have the second. Second, the review. Any discussion, any questions? If not, Julie, you can all vote.
I bet we're crashing?
Oh, it's spinning on my side. It's working.
I bet we're crashed.
A A or A or an A, and I can just put here nine others.
All right. All the paper?
Hi.
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 The polls? Do you guys have it? All the people?
Okay. Just to get the motion on the table. Remove that the district committee approved policy, IKF, graduation requirements for first and second reading.
Second.
Honors. I wanted to do an explanation of this. I'm asking, the group is asking for this policy to be the first and second reading. It is a new policy, and it is a one-year policy. It's covering us for this year's graduation because of the cancellation of or elimination of MCAS via a graduation requirement. So this particular one will compensate for anybody who didn't pass MCAS, but believe there's one of these students that came into the district from someplace else that never took it. So now this covers that first and graduation requirements. And we're then waiting for the state to determine what comes out for next year's. So this is a new policy, and it's a competence, competency determination policy. It will only be for one year.
And it is clear that every district has to do this.
Yes.
Every district has to pass for a one-year CD policy, I suppose.
Right. And just touch on what she said, we had a lot of discussion on this. This, this particular policy, just this year, but next year, the policy will be coming up again. It'll be rewritten, but it'll still be the same policy. This is a policy that's going to be part of our permanent policy. So this is a new one, but it's permanent because of the elimination of MCAS.
It'll just be rewritten for next year.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, we hope to have the full policy, the full new CD policy for you for the evening.
Oh, and we have...
I have faith in Kristy, Vicki will get it done.
We have a policy meeting on the 26th, so if you get to us by the 20th, we will...
26th of this month?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Read your emails.
Ooh.
We did not put it before council, but it's pretty straightforward for us. Because as Diane said, every single one of our kids had already passed MCAS. Like, the kids who had rolled at the start of the year had passed MCAS already, so they were guaranteed to pass. Two students transferred in, when you get to the part of the policy that talks about a transcript, you were allowed to look and see, okay, do they have coursework that matches what our general required courses that they would have to pass? So, but do you have anything to say, you want to add to it?
Yeah, the only, I will just back up, just to mention two things that I think are really important. This policy addresses one of the two things that school districts have to address that DESI is still creating language for. The first is completing coursework that's satisfactory, meets the requirements. And that, basically, we've written to say that it meets our grading policy, which is 60 or above. So the very first basic requirement is that they pass the courses we say they need to. And the courses that we say they need to are completely aligned with DESI, which is the MCAS subjects, right? The subjects they were tested in. The other piece that's coming to you next time will include the mastery. And there's a lot of debate going on about that right now in several of the meetings that I've been with DESI, as well as the other academic directors in the state. And mastery, what they're saying to show mastery would be that students would have to pass a final assessment, an end of course assessment, and that could be a test or a project. The problem with that is the lack of clarity around whether or not it needs to be both passing. Because we know sometimes you have kids who don't quite pass the final exam, but pass for the course because they did well anyway. So if they're requiring both. And so there's some questions around that, and so that's getting ironed out right now. So we want to make sure that the draft, right now, the draft that DESI put out last week is open for public comment until April 4th. Also, the governor's graduation council is going to have some opinions on this as well. So if we bring it to too early for the 2026 and beyond, we don't want to have to bring it back to you again because we have to make additional changes. So we just want to make sure it's comprehensive.
Okay, we have a group minutes.
No, we didn't.
What points?
We need to be meeting soon.
We have a meeting scheduled, March 27th. And graduation gifts to me, Dr. Trigg?
Yes, we'll be in meeting in April. We have a total of $650 in the amount. Hopefully, we give another $350, so we give out four gifts. And thank everybody for supporting the group.
If somebody wanted to donate, how do they go off going at that, Tammy?
Dash, Chad.
You got the who?
Uh, Tammy, no, Monte.
Doge is looking for you.
All right. And then we have financial planning?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Move the district committee approved the unanimous recommendation of the financial planning committee to approve the preliminary FY '26 budget as follows. Total budget of $34,641,344, less revenues of $21,462,805, with total assessments of $13,178,539.
Second. Ross. Discussion. Here we go. All the votes.
Yeah, but I missed the, can you repeat it, Tom?
Oh, sure.
All right. Gunner is a Dan, that committee, yeah, Dr. Trigg?
Yes. The, that together on Monday night, it wasn't a war, so there was no, uh, cap ration for, or you know, really too much. We did do some discussing, discussing. One thing is that I have a list of songs here that anybody who's got the 45 records, and they can look at the list, if they have anything on the list, probably appreciate it. Pretty close to the end, we've gone from 600 plus records since, since last time. The other thing is that we discussed there'll be a cost of $10 to typically drop. that's going to be at that point. Uh, how we can reject this up in the public, but of course I would, I, um, but think about tools prior to the actual pulling cover that we, uh, send out an email with the flyer, which has almost been completed just a few chapters and graphics given to you, uh, send out an email and it'll have a QR code and, uh, hopefully we'll get a number from the school personnel. And that's what we're going to start with, because we're looking at the number of people who can put in that category. Second, once we have roughly that number up there in the two weeks, we're going to go get some of the email to the school committees in the district, the home managers and the nerves. We can have a look at that. And thirdly, we'll have, because that would hopefully, have we discussed this with the, um, towards the end, we'll advertise coming to the, um, some. We discussed refreshments. This is still in a five-page, a little bit of trend, three and, uh, candies that are synonymous with nineteen fifties and popcorn and potato chips and, uh, I've been on the, and I can get some of this, no, right, it'd be interesting. There was discussion about asylum options. I thought the caveat of that, actually, I thought the caveat of that, that hasn't really been formalized. And of course we have a hoop hoop contest and a dress up contest. And I think that's roughly what it's going to be. John Malko was added to the committee and I've definitely mentioned that, but, uh, we had, we just had a brain fart. I'll get it to you. Um, we're having a problem with, um, not a problem, but it's going to be setting up this and working down these stairs. Hopefully we can get our K P to help out. I know they got squared tables and we, so we should be enough for table class. And, um... And many people can actually rely on the committee to help out again, especially when it's not selling candies and all that stuff. That's still giving more trouble. Is it a thing? Oh, yeah, it's been set up way back when. It's May third, Saturday, May third, February sixth and nine. At the end of cafeteria, we're looking, we're trying to keep the capacity, roughly around two hundred or something tied. And we'll be fine, we'll be advanced more and, um, plenty of room for people. And that should be it.
Uh, financial statements there, we have any questions? For, 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 for,[1308.51]